All right, we'll call the order of the two thousand twenty-three public hearing for the Amherst School District at seven oh one tonight. Hello to everybody joining us online tonight. Hello to everybody here in person. I'm Tom Gothie or the Chair of the Amherst School Board. And we're very glad that you can join us tonight for what is the second of three meetings that we'll have to review articles between now and Voting Day on March fourteenth.
Sorry, Tommy, you were you were echoing.
Somebody could hear me because I could hear myself.
I thought it was me.
There we go. Now I'm off.
All right, I want to make sure we're recording again because I panicked. I just had significant panic in my life. When you were echoing, I had panic.
All right, I get a hand raised. Oh, that's my hand, sorry. Take that down.
All right, I'm good now.
We sure want to start that again, so. All right, so thank you again for joining us for the public hearing tonight. There is no echo now. That is much better. Uh, we'll have our public hearing tonight. This follows up our bond hearing that we had last night to talk about the construction project. And then we will have deliberative session on Monday, February sixth. Before we actually dive into the warrant articles that we'll be discussing tonight, seven of them in total. Uh, we will do introductions, starting to my left with our Vice Chair of the Board, Victoria Parisi, followed by Josh Conklin, Jason White, and then Terry Bean. And then on my right, representatives from the S A U administration, uh, our interim Superintendent Steve Chamberlain, our business administrator, Amy Facy, and then Assistant Superintendent Christine Landworld. And you can go to the next slide, Steve.
I'm gonna just very quickly put in the public comment stuff.
Sure, we will have public comment after each individual article that we present. So we'll have it for the folks that are here in person. Say your name and town of residence when you come into the microphone. If you're joining us via Zoom tonight, you'll be able to do the same thing. You'll have to just raise your virtual hand. Uh, you'll make sure that your full name is in your avatar and your profile. Say your name, turn your camera on, your town of residence, and then you'll have time to ask questions and address the board on the topics that we'll cover tonight. We'll go through each individual warrant article so that you don't have to remember questions through all of them tonight because we do have seven that we will be covering. You can see five different categories that we'll be covering tonight. Starts off with our budget, the proposed budget as well as the default budget. One of those two will be what we're operating under next year. For the contribution of the Capital Reserve Fund for long-term building maintenance. And then two contracts for our collective bargaining units, the Amherst Education Association and the Amherst Support Staff. Each of those ballot measures will be followed by a special meeting, what we're calling a trailer article, to authorize the board to hold a one-time meeting to give us the option of hosting a one-time meeting to propose and then vote on financial items for the two bargaining units if one or both of these contacts should fail. So voters will have a chance to pass the agreement and then pass the opportunity to host that one-time meeting at the board's discretion. And of course, we do have our facilities project, the elementary school project, uh, in the middle there that we discussed last night at the bond hearing. As we go through the presentation, uh, these are the themes that drove the work that you'll see for the first time in full tonight as we go through the budget. Uh, starting off with that article, looking to put together a budget that will pass financial muster clearly first and foremost. But we want to focus on maintaining our class sizes, leveling those out to meet our goals that we've set years ago now for smaller class sizes. Really improving literacy education, that solid building block for all students. Uh, we know that if you don't get to fourth grade, reading at grade level, you're really in trouble educationally. It's hard to make up that time. And then we want to have continued support of the excellent special services that we have uh, in our district as well. And that is partly in the budget, including that service fellows, uh, the contract with, uh, the service fellows with St. Anne's on college, essentially two full-time teachers for twenty-five thousand, yeah, for twenty-five thousand, uh, through that program with St. Aziz's or certified teachers going to get special education certifications. So this is a real bonus and a real cost savings for the Amherst School District if our budget passes and we can include that program in that budget. We also continue to look at short and then long-term planning for the conditions of the school buildings, making sure that we have facilities that match the investment that we're making of the curriculum and the education in this district and the goals that we have for students. And then I mentioned it before, two collective bargaining agreements that were up for negotiation this year. An expiring five-year deal with the Amherst Support Staff and then a three-year bargain, excuse me, a three-year bargaining agreement. That is our second effort with the Amherst Education Association after a four-year deal, uh, did not pass last year. So as we go to our first article in particular tonight, we will start off with Article thirteen, my favorite parts of the night, other than the default. We get to read the article that you can clearly see on the board there as well. So Article thirteen looks like this. Shall the Amherst School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth in the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth within, or therein totaling thirty-two million, four hundred, three thousand, nine hundred, eighty-seven dollars. Should the article be defeated, the default budget shall be. Did I say it wrong? Thirty-two million, four hundred, three thousand, nine hundred, eighty-seven. Oh, I got the wrong number there. This is the, uh. So thirty-two thousand, three hundred, ninety-nine, thirty-two million, three hundred, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred, eighty-six dollars. Amy did change this and I didn't change my notes. That is my fault. There we go. So should the article be defeated, the default budget will be thirty-one million, nine hundred, ninety-six thousand, six hundred, thirty-three dollars, which is the same as the year that we're operating now, uh, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA thirteen, uh, subsections ten and sixteen to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. And that is a majority vote required. And go to the next slide, Steve. Do we have to read those every time? So we have them tonight? Good. We're not reading them tonight. It's on the board and then we can go through and, uh, I'll gladly provide you notes to, uh, to read those yourself because clearly I can't. All right, so as we dig into the budget here, uh, currently operating on a default budget for FY twenty-three, just over thirty-one million. And so that's the starting point of this year's proposed budget that we're working on. Uh, we are proposing an overall three-point-nine percent increase for next year, which is about one-point-two million to bring the proposed budget to thirty-two million, three hundred, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred, eighty-six, just under that thirty-two-point-four million mark. And you can see again a three-point-nine percent increase year over year. Uh, the allocation for funds in the budget breaks down into three different categories, that top line, the general fund, that directly impacts the tax rate. That's up three-point-seven percent. We do put food services in there. It's up point-two percent. But in the end, this should be a wash because we expect revenue to, uh, counter that budget and all that budget line item is offset by the revenue. So we put it in there, but again, expecting it to be a wash in the end. Uh, it is also worth noting that we do have a large surplus that we're operating on this year and we're anticipating another large surplus next year through that nutrition services. So certainly good news on that and we'll have more on that as we get to the spring and get closer to, um, to the end of this fiscal year. And then of course, grants at the bottom for about three hundred and thirteen thousand, that is unchanged year over year. When you dive into the individual budget categories, you can see where the changes come from. Uh, largest increase to one budget line is in special services. This covers additional services that we need to provide for students, an increased demand for student services in the district. And that includes transportation. Uh, as you know, and as we've talked about, we value that benefit of having kids staying in district with their peers and with their friends wherever possible. It's better for them emotionally and, uh, recreationally, if you will, but it's also better educationally. Uh, and it currently represents cost savings still compared to having to tuition uh, every student out of district and then to afford those incredibly high transportation costs that we see in the transportation line item budget and this year's budget, but also just in general in that industry. Facility sees a large increase as we hire additional staffing to help maintain buildings, which is resulting in cost savings elsewhere. So while we're adding people, we're, uh, reducing a lot of our contracted needs because we now have in-house expertise for a variety of fields and projects. And there was also an increase in service contracts for the facilities department, items that we have to have contracts, we have to have and fulfill. So those items are going up as well. Staffing factors into the additions at Clark Wilkins and in the reduction in the budget at Clark Wil- uh, excuse it. Uh, Wilkins and AMS respectively. Uh, we're also hoping to start a two-to-one laptop project, uh, plus replace some additional equipment and fund service contracts from our facility, technology department. And then proposing a cook position for Clark Wilkins, a position that will, uh, give both schools actual cooks in the district and it will adequately staff that Clark Wilkins Kitchen. And then there are increases to our portion of the S A U budget as well. And so you can see again, the three-point, uh, nine percent increase, just over one-point-two million. Proposed staffing changes, as with any business anywhere in any budget, staffing does make up a large increase. We are adding a regular education kindergarten teacher and a full-time kindergarten para uh, after choosing to move a kindergarten teacher this year to first grade because of unexpectedly high first-grade class sizes. So we brought those first-grade class sizes down. The overall first-grade class is very big. Uh, and by adding a kindergarten teacher next year, we'll lower our class size to further meet those class size goals at the kindergarten level next year, which you'll see on the next slide. In addition to class size, uh, literacy, literacy education is certainly on the forefront of what we hope to accomplish as a board. And this is a goal that we've discussed, uh, in conjunction with Superintendent Chamberlain. Uh, this is leading to a library assistant at Clark Wilkins to make the library more of a learning center as opposed to just a place to go grab a book and have a seat. We're also adding a reading specialist at AMS to fund that literacy program as well. You can see funding of a full-time facilities technician. This will help work the late shift at Clark Wilkins, uh, more efficiently and adequately cleaning that building. But it's also going to open, open that building up to have more community use after hours because we have additional staffing there at night now. There's a cook position at Clark Wilkins. Uh, we do have some savings, uh, from the reduction of four paraprofessional positions in the, uh, special services department because those positions are no longer needed. They're no longer demanded by student needs. So we're all able to, uh, reduce some staffing there and some costs. Some of those costs are getting, uh, spread around to other budgets and some other positions that are no longer grant funded, as we'll see later on. But for the most part, we do have a, uh, overall net student services position change of about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in savings, uh, from this year to next year. As we look at the enrollment slides, we are in our first year working with the New England School Development Council on a long-term enrollment projection project. Currently, we are twenty-three students higher than the first projection that they did for us last year. We will continue to work with them. We provide them a lot of information on students, housing projects in town, a variety of other metrics that they're using to come up with their analytics for us. So we do expect those numbers to become more fine-tuned, the more that we work together with them. Um, but for right now, this does mean that we are, had to move a kindergarten teacher to first grade this year to make up for a, a larger-than-expected first-grade class. And so that's why, as I mentioned earlier, we are bringing in a new full-time teacher and para to the kindergarten level next year to bring the kindergarten level to seven full-time classrooms. We do expect to have, uh, one more second-grade class next year due to the big first-grade class that we're talking about this year. Uh, we also expect one fewer fourth-grade class by moving teachers around a little bit. Um, you can see that for the upper parts of elementary school, we're still over the high mark of our goals. There's a lot of red there for second, third, and fourth grade. But to be budget-conscious and to be focused on getting a budget that will pass and trying to keep the increases to a minimal. We did not want to add two full-time teachers this year and potentially even more, as you can sell, see that we certainly could have used that to hit our class-size goal. So we focused on the lower part of elementary kindergarten and first grade to make sure that we meet or, uh, exceed, if you will, uh, do better than our goals in those first two, uh, years in school. Middle school's teaching, teaching will stay the same. Uh, and all four grades will be in that sweet spot in the green or in the blue as, uh, we approach our targets, uh, at each level. And then we've talked, uh, you know, many times over the years that this board does have a desire for smaller class sizes for more impactful instruction. Um, you can look at that well-sided Tennessee Star study. We've talked about it probably ad nauseam at this point, year over year we have. But it is one of the most comprehensive that you can look at to compare the impact of class size on student performance. So that goes into the thinking behind why those goals are where they are and uh, why they may be a little bit lower than what the state recommendations or state, I don't say mandates, but state recommendations, state targets are. So in summary, uh, proposed budget focuses on staffing changes for increased enrollment and class-size moderation. Uh, there's a focus on improving literacy education and support in facilities and food services. We are seeing a large increase in need for special services and the need, not necessarily the staffing. We all know that transportation is staying elevated, uh, and certainly fuel costs are staying elevated. So we've had to budget additional costs in our bus contract and then even further increases in the fuel budgets. Continue to evolve our facilities plans, staffing and capabilities under our excellent Director of Facilities, Roger Preston. And then the biggest tech impact we have, uh, as we move into the modern world, um, or maybe we catch up to the modern world. A two-to-one student-to-laptop program in fifth grade. Funds will help fund that program, but also replace some badly outdated models across the entire AMS. Where we do have a one-to-one in upper parts of AMS, we are going to do the two-to-one in fifth grade at Amherst Middle School starting next year. So that is your proposed budget. As we go to the next slide, this is where the fun truly begins, uh, in the default budget. I will say that we miss, uh, Beth Kuzma, who's done an excellent job explaining this over the last few years, uh, now more than ever we miss her. So I will do my best to try to explain this quickly, succinctly, and as unboringly as possible. Um, so the default budget comes into play if that proposed budget fails. So if the proposed budget of thirty-two million plus does not pass, we will revert to the default budget for next year. This is simply a calculation. Uh, this comes in just under thirty-two million total. And to get to the number, it's a calculation based on RSA forty thirteen, nine B. Starts with the last voting budget, which in this case goes back to the FY twenty-two proposed budget. That's the last time we had a budget pass and then is further adjusted off the default budget that we're currently operating on. Figure is reached when you remove any one-time expenditures like a, a capital reserve fund contribution or a certain projects or certain one-time expenses. You factor in some contractual obligations such as staffing or teacher contracts and then increases and decreases in debt services. That is the basis of the default budget calculation. And if you go to the next slide, Steve, you can see this year's default in the areas of impact. Student and special services makes up the largest increase to that default budget. This includes the student services line and about ninety-nine percent of that salaries and benefits line. Part of that is a grant-funded position that is moving from a grant to the regular budget. So it's the increase in the special, uh, needs, uh, staffing at that point. And then our increased contribution of the S A U budget is in the default as is food services. Food services, though, as a reminder, we put it in there, but we do expect that to be offset by costs to the, uh, excuse me, offset by revenue, uh, in the overall default calculation. Can you go to the next slide, Steve? Uh, it is important to.
It just was a blank placeholder.
I might have, I could, I typed this pretty late, so it may have been just. Nope, I think we have a deleted slide. So anyway, we're, uh, we're good with that. So. I will mention with the default budget, one thing that is not in there, we cannot factor in transportation contracts. Those are not allowed in the default contract for our default budget for whatever reason, same for service contracts with technology or facilities. So if our budget does not pass, we still have to fund those obligations. So they cannot be part of the default in terms of the calculation to get there. So we will have to find ways to be able to fund those out of the other line items in that default budget. Uh, and then another item that is not in there this year because we are not operating on contracts that are carrying over to next year is staffing. So our staffing contracts, if they pass, those will be additional items that are added on, uh, without consideration of the budget. And then they would roll over into the default budget for future years if they are agreed upon this year. So when we talk about the proposed budget, um, some of those things that are not covered, we truly believe that this budget, um, you know, is desperately needed to make sure that this district is not operating under that default, uh, two years in a row. Now we can go to the next slide. So. We talk about revenue, uh, revenue side of the coin. We've talked about food service a few times tonight. We are expecting a surplus in revenue. Uh, once again, we had a big surplus last year and on trend, we're looking at another hefty surplus this year. We'll fine-tune those numbers as we get towards the springtime. We are expecting additional federal, state, and local aid in FY twenty-four, but we do not expect as much in unassigned fund balance at the end of FY twenty-three. So all in all, when you're looking at it, uh, means we're expecting about an overall decrease in revenue of about three hundred and twenty thousand for FY twenty-four. So overall, what does this mean for tax rates? Uh, there is an expected increase of thirty-seven cents to the tax rate for next year under the proposed budget. This includes all the appropriation from the general fund plus decreases in revenue and adequacy aid that we talked about. Uh, we do make up some of that in the statewide property tax to get to that thirty-seven cent tax rate for the average house in Amherst of about four hundred and eighty-two thousand. The thirty-seven cents translates to about a hundred and eighty dollars over the course of the year. Uh, I didn't factor out the average impact of a twenty-cent increase, but it's actually, it's roughly half of that. So if the default budget is what ends up going into effect for next year, uh, that impact would be a twenty-cent increase to the tax rate overall. So with that, I will pause now and we will open it up for questions before the board votes to move that on to deliberative. If you have questions, you can come up to the microphone. Say your name and then your town of residence. See what we have on Zoom. If you'd like to speak on Zoom, you can raise your virtual hands. Yeah, I got it. All right, seeing none, I will take a motion from someone on the board to move this article, Article thirteen, onto the deliberative session next month.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Victoria. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a second from Ms. Beam. Any further discussion from the board? Hey, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five. So that article is moved to the deliberative session next month. Now we will go on to Article, uh, no, not Article seventeen, Article fourteen, which is going to be our first look. We just ratified this last night. The Amherst Education Association ratified last week. And our board voted on this last night. Article fourteen is a new three-year proposal with the Amherst Education Association. You can see the numbers on the board there for each year of this three-year deal, approximately six hundred ninety-one thousand in year one, six forty-eight in year two, and then six forty in year three. As we break down what is in this three-year deal, remember last year, we, uh, had a four-year agreement agreed to that did not pass on Voting Day. So we are coming back with another agreement with the, the students or with the teachers, I should say, for this year. Uh, and this is some of the highlights of what it's in it, not only for the teachers, but also for students and then for taxpayers and wealth, uh, as well. So our goal coming into the negotiations, much like last year, was to, to get some more educational time for students. But we really noticed last year that we had to fix what we would call, uh, very politely, a busted salary schedule. It was, uh, something that was being operated on from that last agreement. And it was, uh, it was not a good salary schedule for taxpayers and it was not a lot of, not a good salary schedule for all teachers in that plan. So we fixed that salary schedule and we really focused on doing two things. Number one, we leveled out the steps. They were all over the map when you looked at it from the previous agreement. Uh, they were uneven up and down the scale and then horizontally as you progressed, they were not even either as you got more education and move left to right across the contract, the scale as well as up and down. Uh, we also had steps, uh, where a teacher with a master's degree could end up making less than a teacher's with a, with a bachelor's degree, even though they were on the same step. And that's certainly not how that is designed. And we were able to get rid of what we call jump steps where there were contracts raises of anywhere between eleven, twelve, thirteen percent in a single year for a single teacher on these jump steps that were put into this contract to make up for lost steps previously and then just became embedded in that contract. So we got rid of the jump steps and we actually increased the time it takes to get to the top step of the salary scale, which is roughly the same, uh, same point in the salary that they are now. Uh, we increased that by two vertical, uh, by two steps in each vertical column in that salary scale. So we extended it. And then we leveled out those steps to make sure that we didn't have any eleven, twelve, thirteen percent jump raises guaranteed for every teacher. While we did that salary reset, it was also important to increase the base salary for young teachers. Uh, when teachers retire or leave this district, we want to make sure that we can attract the best young teachers in the state. Um, they're, they're hungry, they're ready to go, and we want to make sure that we are a, a landing point and a marquee attraction for these young teachers. So we've raised the base salary to forty-five thousand. This is going to keep us in line with increases that we've seen from neighboring districts and some of the best districts around the state. Uh, and this is very important as we do see upwards of six to seven teachers retire every single year. So there is opportunity for us there to get some of the best teachers in the state by increasing that base salary. We've increased training for those new teachers. They'll have three additional days at the end of summer, uh, before the school year begins, uh, for all new teachers coming into the district. For all teachers, we've added another professional development day in year two of the contract. And then we've added a third professional day for all teachers in year three of this contract. Most importantly for students, we've picked up additional classroom time by adding those two professional development days. We are eliminating up to six late starts. Three in year two and then three in year four. So we'll go down to, uh, year three, excuse me. We'll go down to four total late starts uh, for a single school year. That adds the equivalent of about two full, uh, days of educational time by getting rid of six late starts. We are also adding in year two of this contract, a brand-new student education day. Uh, so this will increase our calendar from one hundred seventy-five to one hundred seventy-six for students, uh, beginning in year two. We also have stopped new enrollment to the most expensive health plan and we are now offering a less expensive, high-deductible health plan that has an HSA for all teachers. We're ending that a year earlier than Health Trust, which provides the, uh, health plans for teachers. Uh, there's no broad-based wage increase. The COLA in the first year of this contract, as we implemented that new scale, there's a three-and-a-half percent increase in year two and as a three percent increase in year three. Uh, and again, uh, it's a three-year deal, providing additional classroom time for students, more training time for teachers, levels out the steps from that previous salary scale, and it gives just one step to teachers after last year's failed contract. There are no, uh, double-step increases after missing one in the year that we're currently in. Uh, and then for that first year, when a small number of young teachers see some bigger raises, it does, uh, bring the increased range down considerably. We were looking at anywhere six to twelve percent when you factor in those jump steps, uh, in the last contract that we had. Uh, right now, we're looking at about three to seven percent on the high end, three to six percent in the second and third years of this contract for a good majority, seventy-five percent plus of the teaching population in this district. So we've leveled things out and stabilized things, uh, and made sure that we can fix that salary scale and add student time. Go and go to the next one, Steve. We talked about a trailer article. This is the first of two of these that you'll see. This article will allow the school, the, the school board, uh, at our option to call a one-time special meeting. So if this contract fails on Voting Day, we have the option to call a special meeting, which would include a public hearing like tonight, another deliberative session and a voting day sometime over the, over the summer to discuss only salary items for teachers if that article fails. We wouldn't discuss any of the other items like days or health plans, but we would be able to discuss a measure to put some salary package in there for teachers so they don't fall further off of their career track. So we are putting this on the ballot. This is something the town can, uh, elect to give the board the option or the privilege of hosting a special meeting if Article fourteen should fail. So, uh, one does not have to pass for the other to pass. They can, the fourteen can fail, fifteen can pass, and then the board will have the option of having a discussion over the summer uh, and proposing and working with the teachers on a, uh, stopgap salary plan, uh, if it's passed, if this article is passed by the town. So with that, I will pause once again and we'll take any questions that people might have. Okay. Terry, you're, you have to go to the microphone. I'm just kidding. You have to, you have to turn on your mic, though. It's fine. No. Never.
We just talked about so steps so much. I just thought it might be a nice reminder of what exactly is a step every year. Is it every? How exactly does that look for those who are less familiar?
Yes, so every year a teacher advances a step based on their experience teaching, uh, and then generally in contracts, there is a COLA added on top of that as a cost of living increase. So there are twenty steps in our salary schedule. So a teacher, in theory, has twenty years, uh, when they start to when they get to the end of that contract to the, to get to their max earning potential. That max earning potential really never ends because even beyond that, we don't just stop giving teachers raises. They would get smaller one-time COLA raises. So in the beginning of those first twenty years, they're getting a, a step, which is generally an experience increase. And then they're getting the COLA on top of that, like everybody else on that salary scale as well. So that's the vertical track on the salary scale. The horizontal track starts off with bachelor's on the far left and advances all the way to an advanced master's degree. So the further, more education you have, the further right you go, and then you go on down there vertically, uh, the more years you progress on your salary scale and in your career. So, uh, it's a two-part track. Left to right is education, up and down is years of experience. Thank you. All right, so with that, without seeing any further questions, I will take a motion from the board to move Article fourteen and Article fifteen to the deliberative session.
I will make, excuse me, I will make that motion.
I have a motion from Josh. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Basin with the second. Any further discussion by the board? All right, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five. So we have that one passed unanimously onto the deliberative session on February sixth. That's nothing else. Okay. So as we move on tonight, we will go to our next collective bargaining agreement. This is a three-year deal with the Amherst Support Staff Association. Thank, uh, all the workers that are in, in a school that are not administration, that are not building leadership like principals and that are not full-time teachers. These are paraprofessionals, kitchen workers, custodians, uh, facilities technicians. Uh, you know, facilities technicians aren't covered by this, are they?
No, they are not.
They are not, excuse me. So not facilities technicians, custodians are, um, office managers, things along those lines. This contract is a three-year agreement. Uh, you can see one oh eight in the first year, followed by numbers of about sixty-nine thousand in years two and years three, and that is a simple majority vote as well. Can you go to the next slide, Steve? So for this contract, this was a little bit easier to determine our philosophy and to a little bit easier to come to the agreement that we did with the support staff. Uh, and this really centered around one theme and that was attracting and then retaining employees. Um, everybody in here is driven around. I saw a sign yesterday, twenty dollars an hour to go work at a pest company. You see fifteen hours plus at Dunkin' Donuts. Over the weekend, I saw seventeen dollar an hour starting salary at Target. Um, the support staff is coming off a five-year deal and the market winds have shifted pretty dramatically since the last time that they agreed to a contract five years ago and the last time that contract was negotiated. So our goal with this agreement, uh, is to basically compete with the open market for workers. We're not competing with other schools for teachers. We're competing with Dunkin'. We're competing with Target. We're competing with a pest company to be able to hire qualified workers as custodians, kitchen workers, paraprofessionals, office managers, library assistants, you name it. We have had a very We have had a very difficult time funding some of these positions and it's mainly because of the market, uh, market economics right now. Um, when they can make three or five or seven dollars more working at someplace else that I just mentioned. Uh, again, we still have positions that are unfilled as we speak because we simply can't compete with the current contract that we have. Uh, the first step of our current salary scale starts at about twelve dollars and a quarter and it ranges up to sixteen sixty-four. And if you're going to start at Target for seventeen dollars an hour, um, and you can still work what we would call mother's hours. Uh, it's a pretty good deal, you know, upwards of five dollars more than you can make in the district. So we did a couple of things to the salary scale. We, we, we reduced it from forty steps to twenty to make it a little bit easier clerically, but also to provide meaningful raises every year, um, compared to what we previously had. We've increased starting pay, all but one step for one position. The upper-left corner is the only one that is under fifteen dollars an hour right now. That one is at fourteen seventy-five. So for our intents and purposes, when Uncle Sam comes in and gets his fingers on things, you're at about the same. You're close enough to fifteen an hour. We've increased the per-hour benefit for personnel that have associates or bachelor's degrees. And then we've increased the rate for, uh, of hourly pay for when a support staff member has to fill in as a teacher during the course of an average school day. So we believe that all of these items, all of these steps, uh, at a relatively small cost, especially comparing it to a larger bargaining unit um, with the Amherst Education Association, this will allow us to really attract more employees, keep those employees by offering better starting salaries and then more competitive step raises each year and ensure that the people that we entrust, uh, a lot of our one-on-one time with students that, that those people really want to be here and that we can keep them here and we can have, can have some continuity year over year, which is only going to benefit students. And go to the next slide, Steve. As with that teacher's contract, we do have a trailer article, uh, for the ASSA agreement, again, giving us the option. If the Article sixteen fails, uh, Article seventeen, if it passes, would give us the option of hosting a one-time special meeting to be able to study financial items and propose something to the town and then go through public hearing deliberative and voting day once again. Um, to be able to pass something financially for the ASSA staff. If that fails and seventeen fails, sixteen and seventeen fail, uh, ASA, ASSA staff members would stay on the status quo contract, which I mentioned has that salary scale starting in the twelve to sixteen dollar range as opposed to what we're proposing. Um, one last thing I will add is for the AEA agreement and the ASSA agreement, we just ratified those last night. So later this week, we will have press releases that detail all the changes that we've made in our agreement. So all the language changes as well as the salary scales as well. So you can see the details, uh, that are going into the fully changed agreements. But time-wise, we just haven't had a chance to, uh, get that done between last night's bond hearing, uh, and then the work that we've done here today. So with that, I will open it up for questions to anybody that has them in the community. Terry, anything? No, okay. Uh, seeing none, seeing no questions, I will, uh, take a motion from the board to put sixteen and seventeen and advance those to the deliberative session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Victoria. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Josh, for the second. Any further questions by the board? Okay, so with that, all in favor? Five yeses and none opposed. All right, Steve, you can go to the, uh, next slide here. Just a two, two-part slide. Yep, so this one, Article eighteen, this is a continuation of the long-term facilities planning that we've put together over the last three or four years now. I think this will be our fourth year contributing to this. Uh, this is our capital reserve fund for those long-term repairs and maintenance that we need on the schools, whether or not we have a new building. Clearly, our buildings are in dire need of repairs at this point in a lot of places. So we've, uh, established this fund a couple of years ago that started with roughly twenty thousand dollars in it and is now advanced up into the six-figure category. We are looking to add six hundred five thousand dollars to that at the end of FY twenty-three. That would come out of unassigned fund balance. So there'd be no new impact from any, uh, new taxation raised on taxpayers. This is just money that has already been collected and that we would allocate to the CRF to be able to fund some of those long-term projects. As you look at, uh, what this will fund, we are working, um, on year four of our twenty-year capital needs assessment plan. This has really been fine-tuned for about a ten-year period to really look at some specific, very granular projects we're working on. Uh, it was established in March of two thousand and three, but as we mentioned, uh, contributions really stopped up until three or four years ago. Right now, uh, we're at one point three six eight million. If this money is added in there, it would get us close to two million. But we do have a project that we're putting out to bid right now, uh, working on that priority roof and unit ventilator project. So that's going to be roughly one point six we're anticipating, which will leave us about three hundred thousand dollars left, roughly a hundred thousand dollars for each building. That'll help Roger Preston sleep at night, our facilities director. So that is what the plan is for right now. So this money is going to be used. Um, and regardless of what happens to the elementary school project, we do have to make repairs. But our focus is to be able to put focus and energy into Amherst Middle School, uh, with the hope that our facility project for Clark Wilkins will pass as we discussed last night. Obviously, we're, if that doesn't pass, we're looking at a different plan as we go forward. But right now, um, the focus is on the roof and unit ventilators, making Amherst Middle School watertight. We do not believe that this will cover the entire project that we need over the long-term at AMS for the roof and unit ventilators. But this will replace the most severe, the most damaged ones and help make that building a little less, uh, drippy when the rain comes down. So the six hundred five thousand will go towards that and a big chunk of that two million dollar balance will be taken out next year as we work on this first project at Amherst Middle School. Um, this is a testament to Roger and to the SAU administration to really work on this long-term plan to make sure that we can continue to have funds in this fund to take care of the buildings, but also have adequate plans to make sure we have long-term planning. And, and we know what we're going to be looking at for projects that are coming down the pike, both at AMS and then if needed in the future at Clark Wilkins as well. So that is the six oh five that we're looking to contribute from the unassigned fund balance, uh, on voting day. Okay? Any questions or, oh, look at that. You can see right there. So we do have, uh, the roof and unit ventilators this year, next year, much smaller. Uh, but then FY twenty-six, we do have another big deduction of about one point three million. So we're looking to make another contribution next year. But you can see the, the yearly five-year plan for the contributions and then the projects that we're looking to take out of there to make sure that we're continuing to keep these schools, uh, in as good a shape as possible, particularly AMS. FY twenty-six will be a, a big one with a lot of different projects in there, uh, that'll be about one point three million. So that's what that five-year plan looks like. Uh, we do have, uh, an entire twenty-year plan, but certainly it's much more detailed and much more immediate as you get closer to the present day. And with that, now I will open it up to comments on the capital reserve fund. All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion from the board to move that on to the public, uh, the deliberative session.
I'll make the motion.
A motion from Jason.
I'll second.
Second from Josh. Any questions or any comments from the board? Terry.
All right, I waited for her part. Um, remind me what happens to these funds if they don't get put into this particular?
Sure, if this article were to fail, this is money that would be unassigned fund balances. That is money that can be used potentially at the board's discretion on certain other projects that we might have. Some of it can be anyway, depending on what's revenue and what's unassigned, truly unassigned fund balance from the budget, uh, and then the rest of it would go back to taxpayers. Yes, stop, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, all in favor of moving Article eighteen to the deliberative? One, two, three, four, five. None opposed. So now I will stop and I will turn it over to Jason for our final article tonight.
Yeah, hopefully I'll be as fast as Tom. I don't know. I don't know. I can go to the next slide there, interim superintendent Chamberlain. All right, so this is Article twelve. I'm not going to read it. Uh, board member Victoria Parisi very eloquently explained all the details of this last night in our public bond hearing. I'm not going to go into that level of detail. I'm going to be trying to hit the highlights and, and probably still taking a long time. Yeah, so you can go to the.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, seeing the next slide. I feel, yeah, that's, that's a good one, yeah. So, um, our goals for this project, we, we have many. Uh, but it's to benefit both not only the educational community, but also the community at large. Uh, first, a successful building project creates a safe place to receive an education for our youngest citizens. Safe because the building can be secured properly, will be asbestos-free, and will have appropriate fire safety. Additionally, the new building will house kindergarten through fifth grade, creating an educationally sound environment with spaces designed to meet instructional needs of all of our young Amherst residents. There were certainly more details I could go into here, but for the sake of time, I will move on to community benefits. Um, if, you know, when opened up to public, if people have more questions, we can answer them and then. Um, so besides providing a school, the new school provide needed community space and benefits. For example, the new building will have more spaces such as a full-size gymnasium. Other community members will be able to utilize during non-school hours. Furthermore, the site work at Wilkins will allow for more parking spaces, meaning larger events can take place where the community can gather. The new building could also, though we would never hope for this, uh, potentially provide an emergency shelter if needed. Finally, on this slide, you can see that our projection is to have our students entering the new building by September twenty twenty-six. So if this passes, that is when the doors would open. You can go to the next slide. All right, I'm losing the notes here. Here we go. All right, so this is the renovation slide. This basically talks about the physical characteristics of the new building. If you really want to see it, I would recommend going to the JFAC website. It has pictures and, and different things that you can, you could view. And I, I think that'd be more helpful. But one of the most important things to note about the physical characteristics is that they line up with our stated goals, which I think shows the amount of thought, care and time that a number of people put into this project. Um, JFAC members, board members and administration. This isn't something that was not, not thought out. So we've talked about, you know, literacy and one of the things will be an updated, you know, library space and things like that. So there is alignment with everything that we've stated and there is a through line with getting a new, a new building. So you can go to the next slide. All right, so again, right, impact on student learning, obviously improving student learning is a major goal of the new building. Again, a new building will have spaces that will allow high-level instruction and education to take place. Also, our administration has placed an emphasis on high-leverage practices. Having grades kindergarten through fifth grade housed in one building will allow for further capo- collaboration between administration and educators to ensure the best possible learning is taking place. This slide lists a number of physical spaces that will benefit instruction. So again, that, like that library space is up there, art and music having its own space and allowing teachers and ed- educators, all educators in the building to collaborate with one another to deliver, to deliver those high-leverage practices for our students. And it allows for our administrators, meaning the building administrators, to be in one spot. They lose time traveling between buildings, which is not efficient and is not, um, and that just has a negative impact on student learning. Next. All right, so school building aid. I know this is, everyone wants to know if we're going to get school building aid. I think the most important piece to take away from this slide is that we were ranked number seven out of seventeen applications. The ranking shows that when outside evaluators look at our facilities, they see a need for a new facility. Some might say the seven is not high enough. The main reason we did not rank even higher is due to Amherst socioeconomic status, not the state of the school facilities. So that plays a large role and I think people need to understand that. We would have ranked higher if not for our socioeconomic status. It is not a reflection of the condition of the schools. Unfortunately, whether we will or won't be awarded money will be known in the summer. Right, won't, won't, won't be known by the vote. Um, Amy Facy has done exhaustive work to put us in the best position to get state aid, but we have to proceed as though state aid is not going to be awarded. So when we go through the financials, we are going through this with the understanding. You can see on that final bullet point, funding is possible, but not highly likely. We are hoping for some other opportunities, but that will depend on the, the state legislature. There's nothing we can do about that. So, next slide, please. So this is, these next two slides have kind of lumped together. There are different ways of showing the same information, basically. And this is how the tax rates will be impacted by passing Warren Article twelve. Uh, the Amherst School Board has voted at this time to proceed with level debt, which means the tax impact will be consistent for the life of the loan. Obviously, year one's the exception because it's like an interest payment that needs to be made first, but you can see after that, the blue lines are all the same. Everyone should know that if and when interest rates go down, we will refinance at a lower rate. So this is all based on that six, yeah, you can toggle between the both. No, good, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, no worries. It's, it's all basically the same information. Um, right now, we're basing this on a, a conservative rate of six percent. We are cautiously optimistic that that number will be different when we go to actually do this thing. Um, also, the bond, right, because the bond market is fluid. As new information comes out, we could change the loan from, for example, thirty to twenty-five years if that's more beneficial. We are always looking to do what is responsible and what we believe will support the passage of Article twelve. We will be deliberate, we, we will by deliberative know more details. As of now, these slides show the average households tax, how the, how the average household's tax will be impacted. Again, this is a fluid situation. If it, if it goes down even a half percent or something like that, it makes a, a major difference on the overall cost of the debt. Yeah, thank you. I think that's, that's it for me. That's all I got. My notes right now.
All right, any questions on this project? I know we, we had some questions on it last night, but any further questions here tonight? If you are watching virtually, you can raise your virtual hands, turn on the camera, say your name and where your, uh, your town of residence and then we can get you on for any questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll look to move Article twelve, all the way back at the top of the list, to deliberative session with a motion from the board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Victoria.
I'll second.
Uh, second from Jason. Any further discussion by the board?
I just have one thing to add, which I should, I should have added, and that is this, passing this article does not mean we're not taking care of AMS. It just means that our capital, it'll actually free up some capital reserve money that we can put more toward AMS. This does not mean, passing this means that the board does not see the issues with AMS. We see them.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Well noted. Okay, all in favor of moving this to the deliberative on the board? One, two, three, four, and five. Five to nothing today. And with that, Steve, we are, uh, we are at our final tonight. So our, what is it, one, two, three, four, seven articles you can see on the board there as well, the final ones tonight. Uh, Article twelve, the elementary school project, Article thirteen, our proposed budget with the default as a backup. Articles fourteen and fifteen relating to the Amherst Education Association contract, sixteen and seventeen for the support staff contract. And then Article eighteen, the contribution to the capital reserve fund for facilities out of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. Go to the final slide, Steve. So that will conclude us for tonight. Our next session will be February sixth on, uh, a Monday night, six o'clock, right here at the high school. It will be down in the auditorium. That will be our deliberative session. And then about five weeks later, we will have voting day on Tuesday, March fourteenth. That'll be again at South Heagan High School, beginning at six AM and running till eight PM that night. It is worth noting that there are two open school board seats that will be contested on voting day as well. So I believe the filing period for that starts at the end, sometime around the end of this month, correct, Steve? Do you know off the top of your head? Say it again. Okay, so the twenty-fifth of January, if you are interested, uh, in running for a school board seat, even if you're currently on the school board, I believe you still have to file and continue that process as well. So with that, I will adjourn us tonight, uh, without any debate from the board. Okay, we are adjourned at seven.